Okay, good evening everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to an end. Would you stand for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome everybody to the August 8th, 2019 North Hill School Board Meeting. We're here at the Administration Building because we have a power outage at the LGI room. So this evening, we are coming from the Administration Building. We are now going to move on to Board Member Comments if anybody has them. There being none, we could move on to the public comments on agenda items only. I don't know if anybody has signed up. So now we can then move on to the approval of the minutes and I will be glad to make that motion to the Board approve the minutes from the May 30th, 2019 Work Session Legislative Meeting and the June 6th, 2019 Legislative Board Movement Convention. So thank you. Any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will now turn it over to Mrs. Mathis for Education. Looks like you have a few things on the list.
I do.
Like a couple of coughing this guy.
I'm sorry, I'm going to slow down a little bit. So the first four items under Education actually have to do with student handbooks. And Heather, our Director of Communications, worked really hard on revising them this summer. So we're going to do a brief slideshow highlighting what some of the changes are. I think that they look amazing and I want to thank everybody who worked on these because they look really professional and they are all uniform now. And I guess I might be the only person that gets really excited about student handbooks.
I think so.
Yeah. I've read them all.
It's okay.
Yeah. So if you want to go to the slide. So the first, we made several global changes to the handbooks. We made sure that they all had a consistent format because over the years, the different principals worked on the handbooks for the various schools and they became a little less uniform. So we made sure to make them more uniform. They now all have a similar title page, table of contents, information about the crest, the same layout and flow, and then the branding has all been updated with the same font and colors. And they also all have the same consistent information. So just like one example off the top of my head was that the policy on ICE was only mentioned in the elementary school handbook before, but it's actually also an issue in the middle school and high school. So we made sure that those types of things were covered in the handbooks at all the We added some contact information for our school board. And so you can see there, well, it's a little small, but the correspondence information and Mrs. Reeker's email and phone number and then the school board website so that parents are able to know how to contact the school board with any questions. We went through, or Heather went through and made sure that the board policy references were all consistent. There were sections in the handbook where entire board policies were quoted or where in other handbooks, just segments of board policies were quoted. So now it's more uniform so that the board policy, and next service quoted and then the policy is referenced. And that way, if there's a change in the board policy, it will, you know, parents will be able to be directed to the appropriate board policy and the handbook won't necessarily need to be updated. We also added the equity statement that we improved last year, which is Board Policy 103 to all the handbooks. We added information on the standard response protocol that we also implemented last year. We added language about vaping and vaporizers to all the handbooks. There was language about e-cigarettes before, but we just wanted to update the terminology in there. In the middle school handbook and the high school handbook, we strengthened the language prohibiting students from sharing pictures and videos from in-school altercations and negative events on social media. I know we had a couple of instances with that last year, so we wanted to make sure that was reflected in the handbooks. And this was added to all the categories under the discipline code. Also in the middle school handbook, the electronics policy was updated to replace some outdated language and more accurately reflect how electronics are to be used in the middle school. And we also included language prohibiting students from sharing pictures or videos of negative in-school events on social media. In the elementary school handbook, we updated the contact information for the principals and added Mrs. Matthew, the new Director of Elementary Education. We also added Power School information, which was missing from the elementary handbook. And then, this is actually an athletics item, but I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Kuzera because it's also handbook related, so we included it in this presentation.
The consistent format has been taken over for this handbook as well with the title page. We've continued similarities with the previous ones as far as the North Hills logo, the font colors, and the addition of the healthy roster information, which is on page 12 of the athletics handbook. All parents and guardians must create a healthy roster account and submit the required forms.
Thank you. So that takes care of items one through four. Item five is a request for the Board to approve Resolution 2019-12, North Hills School District's intent to develop, approve, and utilize a flexible instructional day program in accordance with Act 64 of 2019, Section 1506 of the Public School Code, per the attached. And full resolution is attached to the agenda, but basically it says that we are going to be applying to the public, I'm sorry, to the Pennsylvania Department of Education to develop a flexible instructional day program, which would allow us to still meet the 180-day instructional requirement, but use flexible instruction days in lieu of snow days. And I'm actually going to pause my agenda items here and ask Dr. Manor Mino to explain this a little more and go over any details and maybe have a brief board discussion if anybody has any questions on this.
So right now, the applications are available to all schools in the state of Pennsylvania. At one point, there were a few schools that piloted this program several years back, have been approved and have been using flexible instructional days. Now that's open to all of us to apply for our ideas to be used for flexible instructional days. And so what this resolution is basically saying is that the Board's authorizing me to go ahead with the application. The application is due on August 31st. So there's quite a bit of work to be done on the back end of this whole thing about what does that look like, how do we utilize it, what if the families do not have access to power, do not have access to the internet, do not have access to technology. All of those contingency plans must be built into the application. The application and six example lessons must be approved by the Board in September if the PDE approves our basic format as to what we are planning to do with flexible instructional days. So I don't have a lot of specific information other than, you know, we're looking to develop some ideas that we can still educate our students appropriately while we are in inclement weather, ice storms, cold weather, those things that we have to cancel school for. And that's including, you know, last year, we had to close the middle school because the heat went down. And so that would be an example where we could utilize a flexible instructional day. Again, with snow days and, like I said, ice storms and cold weather, where we would still be in operation. And so that's what five is saying. It's saying, yes, go ahead with the application process, but then stay tuned because in September, you'll then see a lot more detail about what the specifics are in that plan on how we would initiate a day, how parents would access the information, how students would access the information. What if I don't have internet at home? What if it's closed because of power outages and we use a flexible instructional day? So how do we do those things and still make this happen? So the flexible instructional day program is an option. It's not saying that if we produce five, because the law allows you to produce up to five flexible instructional days to be used a year, it doesn't necessarily say that we'll use all five. It doesn't necessarily say that, you know, we have an ice storm and we choose to not use a flexible instructional day and make up those days. You still must build those weather emergency days into your calendar and then choose to utilize them whenever you're faced with those situations. So that's kind of the basic information of it. Again, I'll give you a lot more specifics once we are completed with the application. I have a meeting with a group of teachers on Wednesday to begin to build the lesson plan examples as to what we expect. And so I think a lot more information will come from the teachers once we talk about, this is what it sounds like from the law and what it looks like and get there before we really build this and send it out there. So that's kind of where we are right now. But this resolution is saying, go ahead, let's try this to get the approval. And then you'll see much, much more specifics of this in September. Tim, I saw your name.
Yeah, I guess my question was, how does it impact the teachers? I mean, are the teachers going to be required to come to school?
Well, there's a section in there that you must include what is the responsibility of the teacher.
So what's that?
And the first sentence I typed is, it is a workday for the teachers. So some of the other schools give the teachers options. And those options are, you can physically come to the building if you would like. It's not a requirement, but it's an option. But you are required to log into the system and be available to students. And so that's what it's going to look like. But then that's where that discussion comes on Wednesday with the group of teachers that I'm going to work on this with. So that's, the application is basically, how will you notify people if you do this? How will students access the information? What is the responsibility for students? What is the responsibility for teachers? What are the accommodations that will be made for, you know, internet, no power and those stuff? So I have all of those ideas in place as to what we're going to do. And you'll see, like I said, you'll see the specifics of them in September once I have an opportunity to work through the committee with the teachers. But we are absolutely, the thing about it is, as I've read through the ideas about the flexible instructional day, it's an impossibility for it to be, it snows tonight, tomorrow school's canceled and we operate as if those students are physically sitting in that room tomorrow. So the lessons have to meet the standards, but they're not going to be able to be specific as to, you know, we're learning the attack on Pearl Harbor tomorrow, so this is what tomorrow's lesson is. It can't be that way. So it's got to be a little more of a generalized lesson that meets the standards and still advances the students academically. And so that's where it's a very strong possibility that those activities are going to be available in advance. And if we know in advance that this, my family doesn't have internet, how do I get access to this? We can give them those activities well in advance. So that's sort of, again, the rough shell of it at this point as we're working through it. But those are the ideas that we have to make sure that...
And they, well, they be required, the student be required to hand something in or actually...
So in the exemplars, they're called the examples of the example lessons, it is, you have to have a statement on each of those lessons about what is the student required to do in order to be in attendance. And that's where those activities come in. So it may be read this and we have a quiz tomorrow when you get back or whatever. It may be, you know, different types of assessments that the teachers have, but there's a list of things that they're expected to do to be in attendance. But at the same time, they have an extended timeframe in order to turn those in. And so a lot of schools, we've seen that have gone up to as many as 10 days to turn the activities in. So that, you know, again, like the power's out and I can't, I don't have access to anything. My books are in my locker. I can't do any of these activities. Well, you can be given those activities the next day when we arrive back to school. And then you've got this time period in order to complete those to still be in attendance for that flexible day. So it is flexible and there's things that we can do. And certainly, we're going to utilize the technology through the website and Google Classroom and iTunes, U and the different programs that we have available to students. But we also have to take into consideration no power, no internet, and those things that also require us to close schools.
Can you talk a little bit about the timeline? So we would approve this resolution today. And then assuming we did, you would have been a comprehensive proposal at the September meeting for how this would work? And then if that was approved, then would we implement this for this school year?
That's the plan. So the timeline looks exactly like you just said. So the application is due by the 31st.
The application meeting?
Yep. So there's an application of how, what are the expectations, how would you initiate it, what are the expectations of the teachers, the students? So there's like six questions plus six example lessons. And if the state of Pennsylvania approves that basic structure of it, then you will approve the, you know, you'll approve the full format and the example lessons. And then our plan here is to have all of the lessons prepared for like December 1st. And then if we're in that situation, decide whether we would do it or not do it. We could submit our application to the state of Pennsylvania, say no, thank you.
And when will they get back to us? So the applications are due on the 31st and then...
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah. Because there has to be a resolution in September that you approve the format and the examples.
Okay. So if you submit the lessons in advance at the beginning of the year or with the application, does that mean, are you saying that they might not sort of be like aligned with the students are doing in the classroom during that particular time period? These are just like pull-out lessons, basically?
Yeah. So it wouldn't be that specific day we are working on this?
Right. Okay. Gotcha.
That's what's going to be the tricky part.
Right.
Because, you know, we've had cold spells where we've closed school two and three days in a row. So are we going to flex day one, two, three?
Yeah.
Like that's where we're going to approve to use up to five, but then once we're faced with a circumstance, is decide if and how we would utilize those flex days. So this isn't the guarantee that, all right, we're going to do these five, we're not calling, you know, we're not going to lose any of the days that are around the Easter holiday. That, we could use none of them and, you know, call off school and make those days up as we have in the past. So this gives us an option.
So if parents were to have concerns about using the flex day instruction, you would recommend that they, I mean, we can pass this resolution and we can still ultimately not, you know? Like even if the Department of Education like says, this is fine, we can come back because we still have to approve this. So they'd have to come, we'd have to come back to the next meeting and say like, well, we're not happy with this. So if people do have concerns, they can, they have that opportunity to kind of reach out to us or speak at the next meeting or something like that.
Well, Pat, will this change your theory or your philosophy on when to cancel school or when not to cancel school or if we're borderline, it's still going to go to the same guideline currently?
Yeah.
That is a good question, but I would, I would have to say no to that. You know, I make those decisions based upon what's in the best interest of the students and the safety and being able to navigate your way here and how long you can withstand the cold before frostbite sets in, be based upon the air temperature and the wind chill and all of the fun things that happen at 4:00 a.m. in February.
But you're not going to be more likely to cancel because we have this.
Right. My number one goal is to get our students with our great teachers being educated in that traditional setting. No doubt about it. But I also know that we live in Pittsburgh and it's not the greatest weather. And sometimes it springs up on you without you even realizing it, you should have been up at 4:00 a.m. And that happens, right? So that's, so that is a great question. No. My first option is to have our kids and our teachers together. But this gives us an option and I think it's a great option. That's why I think we should go for it and see where we are and work out some, some grade lessons for the students and see where we go from there. You know, we could use up to five, maybe we build one this year, two, and see where we are with it.
Seneca Valley loved it. I mean, based on what I read, that article they had about it, they just thought it was so helpful and so easy for them to make up that day without actually making up the day at the end of the year where they built this.
And we've talked to administrators and teachers at Seneca Valley and heard a lot of positive things about them. I used a lot of their ideas in the beginnings of our application. I mean, we have, we have some differences on how we operate with student information systems and teacher logins, but for the most part, they have a really good program. And it's something that we took a look at and we mirrored as much as we could that fit with us and then made the changes that we felt were necessary for us.
And how many, we have two snow days built into the calendar.
Five.
Five, okay. And then, then we start chipping away at other, do you know what I mean? Like we have the makeup snow days or do we just, we don't have anything built in? So...
No, we have five built in.
Our spring break.
We have a no rush. We have 180 days scheduled and then there's five.
Spring break.
Five days.
Right, yeah, right. So every day that we lose, we have to make up during that.
And they're numbered so that you know, one, two, three, four, five, which order they're going to happen in.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so education. Next is a request for the Board to approve the 2019-2020 Day Student Agreement with Glade Run Lutheran Services as attached. Glade Run provides special education instruction for students referred by the district pursuant to an IDP developed jointly by Glade Run, the district, and the student's family. Services are provided as needed and there is an attached fee schedule. And next, item seven is a request for the Board to approve the agreement with Wesley Family Services. Wesley Family Services provides student assistance programs and child, adolescent, partial hospital programs. Item eight is a request for the Board to approve the 2018-2019 Waterfront Learning Annual Agreement. Waterfront Learning serves as an option for students in the online academy at North Hills to take online courses that are not currently developed and taught by our teachers. And the costs associated with this contract are lineups in the 2019-2020 budget. Item nine is a request for the Board to approve the agreement and lease between the North Hills School District and the YMCA Greater Pittsburgh per the attached. The YMCA runs before and after school programs in each of the four elementary schools. Item 10 is a request for the Board to approve the affiliation agreement with Carlo University. This allows the district to accept student teachers from Carlo University. Item 11 is a grant acceptance. It's a request for the Board to approve the acceptance of the 2019 Pennsylvania DEP Environmental Grant in the amount of $3,000. These funds help defray the cost of transportation to the Lutheran Environmental Education Center. Students in grades four attend one session and students in grades six attend two sessions. It's a great field trip. My kids love it. Item 12 is a, and my final item, is a request for the Board to ratify the awarding of the bid of Staples Business Advantage for the ZAG Rugged Books in the amount of $29,679. The bids were subject to review by the Information Technology Department and these are for the iPads, I believe.
Yeah, this is my fault. So nine, I must, I don't know how I missed this. So the before care programs are ours. We run the before care. YMCA is only after.
Yeah.
And so in the title, it says before and after, but the rest of it just talks about after. So whatever we approve, number nine, it's YMCA After School Program Agreement and Lease. The district runs the before school. I'm sorry, that's what we were talking about.
Services now. Okay. Do I have to change my motion then?
No.
Okay. The superintendent recommends and I so move that the Board approve education items two through 12. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we move on, I should have mentioned this during the Board Member Comments, but probably most of you have seen this at least on the Board. There was an article coming out in the Patch that North Hills was ranked among the Pennsylvania's top school districts. So out of 500 school districts, we were the top 10 percent. And I was pleasantly surprised, I'm not going to mention names, of some of the districts that we were ranked above. I thought it was a testament to what we're doing. Obviously, the work is never done. We want to continue until perhaps someday we're number one, but at least we're trending in the right direction, I think. Congratulations needs to go out to our staff, to our administration, our teachers, everybody's involved. That's a job well done, so I think it's, this is great that we have a chance to be recognized at least as the top 10 percent, one of the top 10 percent of school districts in Pennsylvania. I just want to mention that. Forgot to bring it up during Board Member Comments. Okay, we can move on to athletics and activities and that would be Ms. Kuzera.
And two items. The first is the Student Athletic Handbook and Guide for Parents for 2019-2020. The item is, the Board approved that. I don't have anything to add other than what was already discussed in the, in the presentation. The second item is certain team uniform bids. The recommendation is that the Board of Directors award the bids for team uniforms as specified below. Softball high school uniforms to Century Sports for $5,571.90. Softball middle school uniforms to Century Sports for $2,440.56. Women's track uniforms to BSN Sports for $5,181. Men's track uniforms to BSN Sports for $5,506. And men's volleyball jerseys to BSN Sports for $16.75. And then the Board reject the bids for women's lacrosse, men's lacrosse, baseball varsity uniforms and baseball middle school uniforms. The bids were advertised as required, three vendors submitted bids. The bid awards were recommended by our Director of Athletics, Patrick Weber, based on the lowest bid received. The bids that are recommended for rejection and rebid were based upon uniform durability and pricing qualitative to the team budgets. I don't know if anybody hears any detail on the slight difference between the women's track uniform and the men's track uniform. Costs is a couple hundred dollars. I don't, I assume that's sort of de minimis difference and not result of like substantially different.
No, they're, they're the same.
Yeah, okay. So does the superintendent recommend and I so move that the Board approve athletics and activities, item one and two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One more thing to athletics and activities. Again, I probably shouldn't have said it at the beginning, but I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow night is band camp review performance at Camp Poplar. I hope a lot of us will be up there and it's 11 o'clock and it's always, it's a great way to start the year, so.
Thank you. Ms. Manu, we don't have anything under Beatty. Do you have anything you'd like to add this evening? Is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, the only thing, I think substantial that's happened this summer at Beatty is their attempt to hire a police officer. I guess they were unsuccessful in finding a proper candidate. But the search continues.
Thank you.
The FCSLA, Family Contro Science Leadership Group, won the national silver medal and we had a few North Hills students on that team. I'm sure we'll hear a little bit more about that. Eric sent me an email yesterday about that, which was really nice for them. National silver medal was pretty impressive. Important to have.
Great. Okay, we can move on to personnel actions. That would be Mrs. Stade.
Under personnels, we have items one through five. Under item two, appointments, we have rejected number 32. Personal items?
No, we haven't voted yet.
We have voted, no.
No, we haven't voted yet.
You're going to make the motion on all items.
And then do that.
We individually do it.
And then you individually do it.
Okay.
If that's what you wish to do.
Personal items are discussed in executive session, therefore, the superintendent recommends and I so move that the Board approve personal items one through six.
Second.
Okay, under...
Second. Okay, will you make a separate motion?
Separate, separate motions.
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to...
You've got to vote on this motion.
Hold on a second.
No, you can.
Hold on a second. You have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
I think what we're talking about is item two, 32, is what you personally want to vote for or against. Okay.
How about if you make the motion to accept all the items, one through 31, and then you could motion, how do you want to vote on 32? Well, we can follow that motion.
Mike.
Can we do that?
We were in the motion and a second. Were we able to change that, Mike, at this point?
Well, I'm not sure. I left the motion was fourth, first time it was items one through six or whatever.
Right.
And then, so that's everything. Now that could be seconded and then do a rule call and each one could say whether or not, because of that concern over two 32, you could then indicate that I vote yea on everything except two 32.
We're just going to send a motion. Can we just do that?
That's the same. I think what Mike just said, Mike, it's the easiest route.
Yeah, I mean, because it's been moved and seconded, so why don't you just do a rule call and each individual board member can decide on that? Because you have another issue on another and you're abstaining on, so that could, Laura will be with him.
Okay, absolutely. Mrs. Kuzera, what is your vote on personnel items?
I vote yes on everything except the item 32.
On, under?
Two.
Under two. Thank you. Mrs. Mathis?
I vote yes on everything except item 32 under appointments.
I vote yes to everything except for appointments number two, the 32 one.
Thank you.
I'll be voting yes on everything. I'll be abstaining on item 23 and voting no on item 32.
Okay. Mr. Burnett?
I will be voting yes for everything under, except under F2, appointments 15, I'll be abstaining. And I will vote no on F32, F232.
Thank you. Mr. Gady?
I vote in favor of all items except item thirty-two, which I'm abstaining.
Dr. Dolish?
I'm voting yes on all items except for number two, item thirty-two, which I'm voting no on.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can move on to, all in favor? I guess we gotta change the stats, or?
We took them all?
Took them all, okay. All right, let's move on to community and intergovernmental relations. There is just one under there, and that's for the Ross West U EMSA contract. I don't know if anybody, questions is pretty standard stuff, we've been doing that every year. Are there any questions on that? I will make a motion to approve item number one under community and intergovernmental relations.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We don't have anything for legislative, but Ms. Menudie, do you have anything you wanna add under legislative?
I think it's starting to heat up on the cyber charter school issue, and I think it is starting to move in a favorable direction. Next Thursday, Dr. Menerino and I have a, a meeting with Representative Valerie Gatos to discuss the cyber charter school amendment, or bill five twenty-six, I guess it is, in the House. And spoke with Valerie the other day, and she is one hundred percent on board to accept the new legislation, so. I think that, that says a lot a lot.
Thank you. We can now move on to policy, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Kuzera to take that decision.
Yeah, thank you. The Policy Committee met twice, I think, over the summer, to workshop some of these policies that we are now presenting for first reading to the entire board. So, the first reading is everybody an opportunity to reveal comment, and this does not adopt any of the changes. We'll have them up for second reading next meeting. There's a couple of different policies going on here. What we had hoped to do over the course of the next year is review some of the policies that haven't been updated in some time to, you know, just kind of update the language, and just make sure that they are kind of, you know, consistent with how we are running. We're also, we've also got some updates in here that are recommended by the Pennsylvania School Board Association, so those are the changes that, and I'll mention this as we go through them. And then, one of the policies was something that we needed to add to our list of policies, and so that's why it's in here. The first item is the revision of policy number two, authority and power. Number two is revision of policy three, functions. Number three is revision of policy five, organization. And I wanna point out that we're not skipping four on purpose, we're still workshopping four, that will come up in a later time. Number four is the new policy I mentioned, the Title I comparability of services. This is not adding, and this is just a policy that reflects how we're currently operating. It doesn't change anything, and this is not something that we were doing incorrectly, we just didn't have a policy on this. And now, we have a policy that both is consistent with the law and explains what we're doing as far as Title I services are go. These next couple are our PSBA update recommendations, revisions of policy two twenty, student expression distribution and hosting materials. Policy three thirty, family medical leaves, administrative employees. Policy four thirty, family and medical leaves, professional employees. Policy five thirty, family and medical leaves, classified employees. Policy, this new policy's seven twelve for crowdfunding. This explains situations where employees or anybody associated with the school wishes to do an online, try to, you know, raise money for anything in particular, and basically, it says that these need to be approved by the board. You can't just go out and say you're raising money on behalf of the school district without coming to the board first to getting, to get that approved. And then, this new policy nine thirteen is, deals with speech and time, place, and manner, any time, place, and manner restrictions on non-school organization group individuals advertising within the school. So, I, you know, I'm really excited about some of these changes, and I, so, again, this is the first reading, so if anybody has any comments on them, I'm interested to hear them. And so, I will move that items one through ten, under policy, be added to the September nineteenth, twenty nineteen legislative meeting for second reading and approval.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Was the crowdfunding policy suggested by PSBA, or does that mean that was an issue in our district in particular?
No, it was suggested by PSBA.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We could move on to finance. Dr. Dolish?
Okay, we've got six things under finance, and basically, a pay the bills agenda this time. The first are our general fund bills, the second are the capital project fund bills. I just wanna note that those include work on our middle school sensory room, which is an extension of the sensory rooms that are student, that are provided to support students who are in those at the elementary level. Those students have the same needs when they move into middle school, so we are providing that for them. So, that was a bulk of the work. The next one is the food service fund bills. Fourth is budget transfers, fifth is payroll for the months of June, July. And sixth is a bid award to copy paper. Even though we've reduced the amount of paper that we use, we are not paperless, we still do need paper, and so, we are going to recommend that the bid be awarded to W.B. Mason, who was the lowest bidder on copy paper. Superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve finance items one through six.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have one question. Mr. Hall, what's the difference, the reason for the maybe four and a half million dollar swing between June and July payroll?
Severance.
June, yes, June is severance pay, and, that would be the biggest one.
We got a significant number of retired teachers, retirees. That's it.
I have another relevant content.
Also, in July, you don't have a number of hourly employees, like paraprofessionals, teaching assistants, things of that nature that you would've had in June.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We could, Mr. Burnett, you got something, Mr. Court Services, to say?
I got a couple things.
I think, first of all, what we'll do is I'll, I'll refer to Mr. Booth over there, and he's gonna talk about the transportation that's come up publicly the last couple weeks. So, Jerry's gonna give us an update on where we stand on the transportation.
Sure. In the spring, the superintendent and the director of the board began exploring how we would proceed with conducting and auditing the safety as relates to bus stops and routes. So, in June, in coordination with the transportation coordinator, we held several meetings looking at the transportation policy from the board, and certain elements as it relates to bus stop safety, and looking at compliance with that, as well as looking at specific routes that parents have brought to our attention, they have concerns about. It's an ongoing process, it's not to imply that this hasn't been done in the past, but we're trying to renew our focus, and although we had minimal outreach to parents, the feedback we have received from them has been very positive, and gives us a different viewpoint that perhaps we need to renew our focus on. But I wanna emphasize to everyone is that this is an ongoing process, it's not a one-and-done thing, and there's been exceptional interest from the superintendent, and also from board members throughout, and it continues. And any input, such as that is welcome, as we proceed.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
I have one other, no questions?
No, just saying thank you.
I have, thank you, thank you. I just have one item. It's, it's giving Duquesne Light a right-of-way to remove a pole that's down here by the maintenance garage. It's for safety reasons on Sixth Avenue, so we're just having agreement with them that they're able to come on our property and remove it, and put a new one in, I guess, plus an anchor, it says. So, the superintendent recommends, and I so move, the board approve support service item number one.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we close the meeting, and address our standing-room-only crowd here, are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, state your name and address of the record, please. Your name is?
My name is Joe Muhaw, I live at one eighty-eight Bombay Drive. I just had a question, as it was being described, the flexible instruction day. I thought of a question, and if we would choose to do a flexible instruction day, say, and the private schools do not choose to do that, so that would result in them going the extra, a day that North Hills does not go. So, would we be obligated to provide transportation on that day?
Yes.
That probably happens other times, so maybe we close, and they don't close, person days too, I would imagine.
Or they have.
I know in the past, they kind of set up their schedule, and I think, for the most part, they, they, they call off when North Hills calls off. But obviously, this throws another variable into your play.
Right. It's a great question, Joe, I didn't think about that.
When North Hills closes, we do not transport.
When we close, right.
Even if private vertical school decides to stay open, because it is a safety issue. However, we are required by law on any day that they are open, that we are typically not open. That's not a safety issue, the transportation. So, yes, we would have transport down, or whatever their makeup day is.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe, good question. Any other questions or any comments from the public? Okay, I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We adjourned.